On May 24th, on May 14th, 2019, the committee of the Christiansburg Town Council has ordered, uh, the first thing we will do will have a moment of reflection. And as you all are aware, this is, and I may miss something else, but this is National Police Week honoring the fine work that our, our police departments do. So, as you reflect, I hope you'll keep each member of the law enforcement agencies that serve us so greatly in the county and Blacksburg and Christiansburg and all, I hope that you'll keep them in your minds. Thank you. If you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask retired Flugsburg Police Officer and Councilmember Sam Bishop to give the pledge in the pledge.
(inaudible)
Of any adjustments to the agenda? There are none, we will move into public hearings. We have a public hearing tonight in regards to the real property rate of 16 cents per hundred and assess value proposed for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Mr. Winfield, Mr. Tweedy, do you want to explain this thing to us, or are we pretty wide open?
Uh, well, the reassessment was done by the county this year, which increased the property values a little over five percent across the town. So, to keep a level tax, the state of Virginia code said you would have to reduce your tax rate to 15.26 cents per hundred. If you maintain the 16 cent rate, which has been our rate for a number of years now, then it's effectively a tax increase because of the increased assessments. So, public hearing is on.
This is nothing new, we did this, Brad, what, 10, 12 years ago, some, some point down?
It's also the same thing that county just did.
And the town of Blacksburg, I believe, just did.
Yeah, they maintained their tax rates at what they were, and they have the same situation where the increase in these values was over five percent, and therefore, to maintain that rate, it's effectively an increase.
Okay. Is anyone here to address this issue? Seeing and hearing no one, I will close up this public hearing. Second public hearing in regards to the water rate proposed by the, for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Randy, you want that one?
Sure. We had previously studied water increases with the district water sewer committee, and we came up with formulas basically to increase over time, there wouldn't be such large increases. And basically, it'll balance out the increases, including the rate increases from the water authority, and also considering our own capital needs. So, basically, we do kind of have a schedule for water increases over time, and this is basically following that schedule.
Anyone here to address this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearings, we'll go into the consent agenda. Council meeting, uh, council meeting minutes of April 16th, 23rd, and 30th of 2019. A resolution honoring former Christiansburg Fire Chief Jimmy Everly for his service to the community. Approval of an updated Exhibit A for federal procurement as recommended by town auditors. We're going to schedule a public hearing on June the 11th, 2019, for an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a small cell franchise agreement by and between the town of Christiansburg and Shenandoah Personal Communications LLC, collectively known as Shentail. An engineering contract with Hurt &amp; Profit to design sidewalk extension from near Falling Branch intersection to Hub and Drive Northwest. I believe that's it.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six out, thank you very much. Uh, we move into the introductions and presentations, and we, Mr. Shawalter is going to help me recognize, um, some Christiansburg High School state champions, so we'll go up to the podium. So, as I call your name, if you would come up, Mr. Shawalter will hand you a certificate, and if, once you've been presented your certificate, if you would just stand in front of the council chamber, our public information officer would like to get a group picture of you. We have some very, very talented people, and we have a very talented team. The body of this certificate reads the same to everyone, so I'm going to read it one time, and then I will give the name and the competition in which they competed. Your dedication and determination is admirable, and your accomplishments have brought favorable recognition to Christiansburg High School and the community as a whole. We wish you continued success and commend you for your outstanding performance conveyed this 14th day of May 2019. And the first one is to the CHS Boys Track Team for winning the 3A State Championship Indoor Track. One of the coaches here tonight? One of the... Next is Ethan Mills for winning the 3A State Championship in the 1000 meter and 1600 meter events. These next four are a, a team within a team. So, I would first like to recognize Alex Waddy for winning the 3A State Championship in the four by 800 relay. Trey Wilson? Cooper Hable? Next is Ethan Wilson for winning the 3A State Championship in the four by 800 relay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but does this team participate in, in New York, some of the games?
Yeah, it was in the North Games and the rebound nationals.
Very talented, very talented. And next, Mr. Rachel Lloyd for winning the 3A State Championship in the pole vault, and I don't think this is your first one yet. Caleb Hatcher for winning the 3A State Championship in diving. You are a junior, so you got two more in you? Nate Ward for winning the 3A State Championship in the 170 pound division. He's not here, I'll check you, we'll see that he gets that. See if I can think of another one, anyway. Andy Smith for winning the 3A State Championship in the 220 pound division. He is not here, and he was also recently named the All Times Land Wrestler of the Year. So, coaches, uh, if you'll get, uh...
Yeah, one Nate Ward.
Brandon Crow for winning the 120, no, 140?
120.
120, okay. First, I need one for him, I saw a fellow had it. We're going to... So, I want to congratulate these individuals for, uh, bringing such honor to Christiansburg High School, to the family, to their friends, so, uh, I know, I won't, I'm ready. I got another one of those stuck in there somewhere. This right here, this I didn't pick it up. Should have known.
What'd you name, Mike? Want to leave?
No, I named Nate Ward. Cut the landscape off, Morgan.
Don't move, or swing the other way.
It is, last minute shot. Woo! Thank you.
Can I say something real fast, Mayor?
Yes, sir, certainly.
Uh, these people, you guys, uh, these young people up front here, look great, they act great, uh, they're the future of our country, and we're in good hands with these folks, they're good, they're good people.
I'm going to give about a half a second, uh, because I know I signed Brandon's certificate today, I want to make sure I've got it on my, should be on my desk, but if not, I'll get it to you before the meeting ends. We're waiting, we'll step to the next one, and, uh... Good nation. Chief Billy Hanks, if he will come forward. Any members of, uh, this is a resolution. Oh. Members of the Fire Department.
Getting just a minute to file in, calling overcrowded rooms, so bad. Fire marshal, figure what.
Mayor, if you want to invite the families of...
Yeah, that was next, thank you for doing my job, Billy.
Got your back.
This is not the view I was looking for, buddy.
I'd like to take a second to read this resolution passed from the town of Christiansburg. Whereas Jimmy Everly served as a member of the Christiansburg Fire Department for 54 years, and whereas Jimmy Everly served as Fire Chief of Christiansburg Fire Department for 38 years, and was the first paid career Fire Chief in the department's history, and whereas Jimmy Everly represented Christiansburg on regional and state level as president of the Virginia State Fire Chiefs Association, 1988, 1999, president, 1974, 1975, and life member of the Southwest Virginia Firefighters Association, charter member of the Virginia Fire Services Council, and chairman of the Montgomery County Fire and Rescue Commission 2005 to 2010. Whereas Jimmy Everly was an honorary member of the Christiansburg Rescue Squad, and whereas Jimmy Everly was a dedicated advocate for fire prevention, and was recognized by President Richard Nixon for his efforts, and whereas the town of Christiansburg is forever grateful for Jimmy's service to our community, now therefore be resolved, Christiansburg Town Council meeting in regular session on May the 14th, 2019, formally recognizes and commends Jimmy Everly, Jimmy Everly's lifetime service to the town of Christiansburg. Thank you, all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. If you'd like to take about a two or three minute break, just so we can meet with the children and the parents and the families and all this stuff, so let's, let's take a little bit of a break, and so we can congratulate these fine young men and women. Of course, the... Call us back in session, and Mr. Collins has another word?
Okay, thanks, sir. I'd like to say, this is a young man who just came into the room last year, he was just announced the winner of the group 3A Athlete of the Year. Give him a great big hand.
What's your plans next year, buddy?
Uh, so, I will be competing in track and field and continuing to stay up front of college.
Good deal, good deal. Lucky then.
They'll be able to see Cooper's name in the paper more next year.
Make everybody proud of you, man.
The next portion of this meeting is citizens' comments. Citizens' comment section, if you'd like to say, talk about anything of concern, please come to the microphone and give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to address council?
Good evening, council, my name is Rita Urban, and I live at 13500 Bridge in Christiansburg, Virginia. And I wanted to address you tonight as a member of the Christiansburg Institute of Amniotic Association. I, I wanted to express my passionate desire to see that place thrive again, because I went to school there when I was up through 10th grade. I had two uncles who were teachers there. I, through study, have been understanding how important it was to have a place for the black Americans to be able to get an education, and I can foresee that vision that they had being a thriving, up-to-date plan for Christiansburg now. And I emphasize "now" because I sense the momentum, there's so many people interested, so many people anticipating what are you going to do, and the plans are starting to come forth now, and I believe that we can be able to connect to the comprehensive plan that the town has, connect to the tourism, be an active part in that, have a shining presentation of our heritage and the things that we believe in still, that help that place to survive, and I'm planning to be instrumental in helping to bring that vision to life, and I do that with excitement and the readiness to get to the work with knowing the extreme amount of perseverance it's going to take, and dedication that it's going to take, but I could see it as doing it, and I could see it as a necessary part of what will make Christiansburg have additional things that stand out within the community, with ideas that will help bring about solutions, and also create community involvement, and have training, and just a wide variety, because I don't believe that building was given to us for nothing, just to look at, and I want to see somebody's vision, since I've been reading about what they wanted to do, and see those things come about. I'm, I'm just that type, I want to give it my all, and I am anticipating your agreement and excitement with this, and hoping that comments like this will help with the decisions that you make that are in our favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Anyone else to address council? Seeing and hearing no one, I will close the citizens' comment section. Committee reports, the sacks.
We had a fabulous central business meeting, and just want to let you know that hopefully you'll start to see new art installments, Cambria and Main Street. So, that's one exciting thing, with the SOG grant programs going excellent, the artist has given us renderance of what they will look like, and hopefully, within six months, there'll be some major changes that you'll see in downtown and also in Cambria. And also, the Take 60 program starts Friday, correct? Okay, thanks, just make sure. And it's take your lunch, you know, grab Subway, grab McDoos, and go sit on Hickok Street and enjoy your lunch, it's going to be called Take 60. Do it anytime, not just this Friday. And also, the farmer's market every Thursday, just to remind you, Casey's done some excellent things down there to keep people engaged. And also, Mr. Bishop, myself, and the committee, we are juggling a lot of projects, but we really hope to get a lot of things accomplished. So, if anybody wants to give their input, the next meeting is Wednesday after the next council meeting at the end of the month. And I'm trying to schedule a tour with the wastewater center, right now, schedules are a little bit challenging, but there's been some changes since I was there last, so hopefully I can get that update at the next council meeting as well. And the last thing, is I want to welcome Home Goods, Ulta, and Perklands to the New River Mall, they just had their grand opening, and they're bringing over 100 jobs, so that's pretty exciting for our town. We keep adding jobs, and that's a great thing, we're actually lower than the rest of the state in unemployment, so that's something to be very proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Well, I would then say a few words about the, the three stores that just opened up in the mall, too, and I was also going to mention, the grand opening did not include, in fact, the, this, this location had their grand opening today, but it's that little hot dog stand that used to be, the old one closed about a month ago, and this fellow has just opened it up, today was his first day, and he's a true mom and pop organization here.
What's it called?
You know? Hot Dickity. And, so, he, I was over there today, and he even gave me a town council special.
What is that?
Yes, the town council special is, is two hot dogs, and they're loaded with a drink and chips for five bucks. So, you just say you want the town council special, and he'll be glad to help you out.
Or the Steve Hooper special. Where is this place at? Is it inside the mall?
It's the same place as the other one.
Which other one? Is it in the mall?
Yeah, it's inside the mall.
Okay, okay, okay.
Christopher Bank, calls from Christopher Bank. Okay. And he also, does he also have a food truck? I've seen him at the food, at the farmer's markets.
That's correct.
So, that's good, that's really good.
Take 60, Steve. Time to bring his food truck down to the Take 60, right?
That's something to think about. Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
Brief report, the Montgomery, Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, of which we are one-fourth owners, I just was appointed that committee in January, it's been very active, I've had three meetings this month, and the last one was today, and one comment I wanted to share with council is, we've talked about the contribution rate being a constant $50,000 per year for the last 20 years, but an interesting fact I learned today, or two facts that I want to share with you, is for every dollar that we put in as part owner for the operations is, results in about $18.60 of additional funding coming in from federal state sources, Department of Aviation, Federal Highway, or Federal Aviation, FAA, and it's huge, and also, for every dollar, we have over $20 of tertiary spending and so forth because of the economic development benefits. And the other fact I wanted to bring, $50,000 per locality per year, and I learned today that the, the camping spots that are sold for the football games brings in $109,000 per year, which is amazing for airport. So, that's helped keep the, I don't want to call them dues, but our contributions down, but $109,000 for those campings, but you see the campers out there? It's pretty amazing, but it's an, it's an amazing asset for us as a, as a town to be a part owner in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shawalter?
Really, the only thing I have to report is, is the citizen reached out via Mr. Stipes and Mr. Bishop concerning the different sized trash cans and the cost, and he wanted our committee, which I serve on with Marissa, the Solid Waste Water Sewer and Stormwater Committee, to take another look at it, and I'm referring this to our retreat, so it doesn't have to go to a committee as a referral to council, because our retreat is so close. So, we're going to put it on our retreat to review and take a look at that once more.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, last week, the EMS, EMS committee took a tour of the rescue squad, and they have done a lot of changes to that building, especially compared to when I was running. I guess it's geared towards the younger generation, they should be finishing what, in, I think they said, two to three weeks, and of course, they're going to have an open house then, but that's a big change to the building.
There is, thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, the, I just wanted to express my appreciation to all the people, there's a lot of them here that helped us put on the Lung Transplant Foundation event this past week, and I appreciate that a bunch, we did, you know, very well with it, and the Rec Center Commission didn't meet this past month, so, as other director was in other Bahamas.
Under, uh, next on the agenda is discussion and action by mayor and council, a real estate purchase contract between the town of Christiansburg and Community Housing Partners for the town's purchase of the five parcels, tax map IDs number 496-a-21, 496-22-1, 496-22-2, 497-a-17, and 497-a-21, $200,000. And I believe we have discussed this many times, and it is kind of a dual use, actually, it, when the train station comes, obviously, we use it for that, but it also has the ability to provide more and some additional parking to the aquatic center.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Mayor, so it's a wise purchase, it's actually an investment for us as a town, whichever use, obviously, we want it to be the train station, but sometimes dreams are dashed, and even if the dream is dashed, which I hope that it's not, and probably won't be, but it's still going to serve a very important public need, which is overflow parking, which, for convenience and safety, is, is wise as well, so it's a win-win for us, it's a very reasonable price, and I'll go ahead and make a motion that we execute, or authorize Mr. Winfield to execute a purchase agreement for the property.
I'll say. Got a motion and a second?
Could happen. That's something to think about. Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
Brief report, the Montgomery, Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, of which we are one-fourth owners. I just was appointed to that committee in January. It's been very active. I've had three meetings this month. And the last one was today. One comment I wanted to share with council is we've talked about the contribution rate being a constant $50,000 per year for the last 20 years. But an interesting fact I learned today, or two facts that I want to share with you is for every dollar that we put in as part owner for the operations is, results in about $18.60 of additional funding coming in from federal state sources, Department of Aviation, Federal Highway, or Federal Aviation, FAA. And it's huge. And also, for every dollar, we have over $20 of tertiary spending and so forth because of the economic development benefits. And the other fact I wanted to bring, $50,000 per locality per year. And I learned today that the camping spots that are sold for the football games brings in $109,000 per year, which is amazing. So that's helped keep the, I don't want to call them dues, but our contributions down, but $109,000 for those campings. But you see the campers out there? It's pretty amazing. But it's an amazing asset for us as a town to be a part owner in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Really, the only thing I have to report is just the citizen reached out via Mr. Stipes and Mr. Bishop concerning the different sized trash cans and the cost. And he wanted our committee, which I serve on with Marissa, the Solid Waste Water Sewer and Stormwater Committee, to take another look at it. And I'm referring this to our retreat, so it doesn't have to go to a committee as a referral to council because our retreat is so close. So we're going to put it on our retreat to review and take a look at that once more.
Okay. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, last week, the EMS, EMS committee took a tour of the rescue squad and they have done a lot of changes to that building, especially compared to when I was running. I guess it's geared towards the younger generation. They should be finishing what in, I think they said, two to three weeks. And of course, they're going to have an open house there, but there's a big change to the building.
There is. Thank you. Mr. Callen?
Yes, sir. The, I just wanted to express my appreciation to all the people. There's a lot of them here that helped us put on the loan transplant foundation event this past week. And I appreciate that a bunch. We did, you know, very well with it. And the Rec Center Commission didn't meet this past month, so this other director was in other Bahamas.
Under, next on the agenda is discussion and action by mayor and council. A real estate purchase contract between the town of Christiansburg and Community Housing Partners for the town's purchase of the five parcels tax map IDs, number 496-A-21, 496-22-1, 496-22-2, 497-A-17, and 497-A-21, $200,000. And I believe we have discussed this many times and it is kind of a dual use. Actually, when the train station comes, obviously we use it for that, but it also has the ability to provide more and some additional parking to the Aquatic Center.
I'm glad you mentioned that, mayor. So it's a wise purchase. It's actually an investment for us as a town. Whichever use, obviously we want it to be the train station, but sometimes dreams are dashed. And even if the dream is dashed, which I hope that it's not and probably won't be, but it's still going to serve a very important public need, which is overflow parking, which for convenience and safety is wise as well. So it's a win-win for us. It's a very reasonable price. And I'll go ahead and make a motion that we execute, or authorize Mr. Winfield to execute a purchase agreement for the property.
I'll say. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just, you know, as was mentioned before, I served on the regional commission, our regional partners being all the towns and localities that connect to Montgomery County or to us, Pulaski, town of Pulaski, Parisburg. And they've added a few more over the years, Fort, et cetera, Rafford. This rail initiative is huge for our region. And it's something that I know we're all paying attention to, but I will say, the one thing, when Christiansburg got the nod, and this was several committees who decided to put it in Christiansburg, and Christiansburg, you know, of course, is the likely hub for mostly everything in the New River Valley. It's a great honor for us, but our council and our staff has been taking the initiative to obtain these properties, to make it easy for the state to put that rail here. So I just want to applaud our council and our staff for taking that initiative or picking up the ball and running with it to ensure that there's no hurdles going forward when it comes to land purchase or access for this rail. So thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clark, I guess we all might all just say this.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilman Collins.
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs.
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter.
Aye.
Councilman Stipes.
Aye.
That is 6:00. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Staff reports, town manager.
We've had a request from Blacksburg Transit to offer free bus fare for high school students through the summer. Probably be minimum of cost, some 50 cent fare anyhow. The Transit Working Group spoke to the members of that and they are agreeable to that. If it's council's wishes, I'd like to go ahead and offer that to Blacksburg Transit high school students.
Yeah.
We would need to advertise our insurance rates. Do have those in front of you based on what our employees and what's expected. These would be based upon the current budget. This is basically passing on the approximate $34,000 employee share on the renewal. Basically, the results to see the increases there, the left-hand side is current plan and the right-hand side would be a new plan.
You need to set that vote of hearing. Next council meeting?
Basically, we just need to push it out to employees for insurance purposes.
Okay. I'm agreeing with that.
Okay.
We need that.
Okay.
We just request for the digital clock downtown to, it's kind of a constant maintenance problem for ours right now, the time's off on it. Jim has requested to consider going to digital for the clock. I know that might not be in keeping with downtown, but it is a maintenance per ear issue. Another possibility would be putting, say, a town face on the clock rather than the
Actually having a clock?
Actually having a clock. Would you want to refer this to Central Business District Committee for consideration?
Have we had any comments from citizens that the clock's not working?
I've had a couple of comments about the time not being right, and it is a fairly constant problem.
Yeah, and it's, if it's not done correctly, then you have to get someone in to repair the whole thing. I would almost be in favor of a town seal.
Me as well. It's a going committee.
Wasn't that donated to us by Mr. Paul?
It was.
Have you talked to him just to make sure he's comfortable?
I'll reach out to him and I guess I can get input into that.
Okay.
If, I guess it's acceptable, would you want discussion of Central Business or bring it back to council?
I think that I'm comfortable, or maybe we're comfortable with you reaching out to Mr. Paul and if he, if he's okay with a, and I don't, I don't think we necessarily put one of the big decals, but maybe we could find someone?
I think it'd have to be something that'd be metal and match, though.
Yeah.
Prefer.
More extra. Okay. I know a company that can do an etched glass of our logo. It would be, you know, it'd be kind of silver or white, but it would, if, find out if Bob's okay with making a change and then we'll go from there, I think.
I think you should ask him too about the digital too, maybe even combining the seal and a little.
I wouldn't go with the digital either.
It's not the type you want to know what time is in there.
Yeah, digital's sort of cheesy though on the historic downtown area.
I think so.
That was my opinion. That's my timing on that.
Okay.
The rescue squad has a request to basically consider a scout affiliate program. We took that to the Emergency Services Committee and they did basically give blessings to that. If it's council's consensus, we'd like to proceed with that.
Hey, what?
Scout affiliate program.
Oh, scout affiliate, okay. I thought you said still. I don't like you saying still.
The rescue squad is thinking if some of these young troopers, it's going to be male or female, you know, get involved with the rescue squad operations and so it can maybe tie into their scouting and tie into also to the rescue thing. And maybe later on, they will become full members of the rescue squad. So that is a good way to sort of recruit young people.
Yep.
And have a letter requesting to bring in more property into town, approximately 25.184 acres of property on Falling Branch Road, belongs to the Foster and Stansel families. I would like to set a public hearing for a boundary adjustment, including this and the other property requested for June 11. And also have a public hearing for their zoning assignments on those properties.
Is the county all right with that?
They are.
So we got Falling Branch, is there another?
County of Lee's planning on setting a public hearing June 10. So there's several properties that we have requests from.
Did we try to get them all in one time?
All pending requests at that time.
Very good. All right.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Randy. Town attorney?
No report, ma'am.
Any other staff members to report with reports? All right, we'll close that section. Town council reports now, which is kind of redundant over the committees, but it's still a couple of, a couple of things I would like to, I'm sorry, Ms. Sax.
I combined it mine earlier.
Ms. Hubbard, Stane wrote, we just need to change that to mayor.
Thanks, mayor.
Okay. Any, okay. A couple of things, I think we got an invitation, the same invitation that the press got today. They're doing a, I guess it's a Throwback Wednesday with Christiansburg Police Department. Mark, can you enlighten us on that?
Sure. We're having a press conference tomorrow, 10:30 a.m. for two reasons. First of all, we're unveiling our new military patriotic vehicle as we approach Memorial Day. We had one, that's one of the vehicles we're phasing out. And we, the first one we had, we just had so many veterans stop by and it's just a great PR opportunity for us in the public. And we're unveiling this vehicle, which is phenomenal. It's a nice, it's the nicest looking police car I've ever seen. So I'm excited to unveil that tomorrow. You will see this week that our officers look a little different. They have light blue shirts on. Our organization stopped wearing that uniform in 1990. Being this law enforcement, police officers week, we thought it would be a tribute to our past retirees and also fallen officers, not just in this area, but across the Commonwealth, to wear this throwback uniform for one week. And we plan to do this every year. And we'll do that press release tomorrow, so when people see us look a little different, they'll know why.
I like the light blue shirts, Mark. Those are nice.
Yes, sir.
I thought those new uniforms got written.
Okay. I have contacted council, May 22 is the New River Valley Regional Commission Annual Awards Banquet. I have heard back from some whether they're going or not.
I'd like to add two to that. Yeah, I didn't respond to you, but I know today was the one.
I told them. All right. You want else? I think we got yours. Marissa?
Not yet. I can't say just yet.
Okay. Steve, Harry is yes, okay. All righty, that is May 22 in the South End Stadium. Who was it? Steve asked me today, which is the south end? I said, I'm just going to go to the one that's got people to it. Figure it's south.
It's opposite the, uh, chicken hill. Yeah, it's opposite the scoreboard. Yeah, it's part of the scoreboard.
Okay.
And then what do we decide, like 6 o'clock?
The social and the dinner program starts at 6. There are some tours starting from 4:30 to 5:45, I believe it was. And you have an option if you want to see the tech athletic facilities or the new Millwood restaurant that is the old Price's Fork Elementary School that they have converted not only to a senior, an over 50 living community. And the other one was the master plan of Virginia Tech. So you have that option at some point if you know what you, if, if you want to do any of them, that's fine. But I think it's 4:30 to 5:45. It's a bus tour.
It's a good opportunity to meet other municipality and their, their elected leaders. But the most important thing, I don't serve on the regional commission anymore. Harry does, but this is more of an award ceremony for a friend of the valley, citizen of the valley. For instance, last year, Pete Buckley Moss received an award. This year is going to be Nick Rush.
Nick Rush.
Mr. Smoot.
Mr. Smoot, and one more, right?
I don't know the other one, yeah.
Okay. But it's a great, it's a great time to meet other people from our other elected bodies.
Okay. Very good. Very, very good. Suiting other business to come before council. I would like to recognize Sherri Blevins, candidate for the board supervisors. Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate your efforts. Jake, appreciate you coming out tonight. He is one of the parties, we'll just say one of the parties.
That works.
Huh?
I said that works.
Okay. Very good. But again, thank you both for coming out and showing an interest because it is a big partnership between us. Thank you. Any other business to come before council? Hearing nine, Ms. Urban, thank you for coming. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Hubbard?
A request for a closed meeting in accordance with Code of Virginia 2.2-37115, I mean A6, for the discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where it may make a public initial for the financial interest of the government until would be adversely affected. And 2.2-3711A29 for the discussion, the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers and the discussion terms of scope for the contract. When discussion in the open session would adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating strategy of the public body, the purpose of the meeting is to consider proposals for the park located on the former Truman Wilson property on Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest.
And I assume that's an informable motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6:00. We'll be in closed session for about, we'll go into closed session in about three minutes. I'd like for the, among the interested department heads and members of the town staff to remain. Everyone else?
Council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting. In the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempt from open meeting required by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in by the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6:00. Thank you very much. Council Action on Matters, we are authorizing the town manager to negotiate an interim PPEA agreement for development of a park on Pepper's Ferry Road and to set a public hearing for May 28 for proposals. Is that the way we read it? Very good?
That's a motion.
So we had a motion in the second. Move. Yeah.
I really, I don't know.
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. I'll second it.
Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6:00. Thank you very much. Mr. Hubbard?
Request for a closed meeting. Request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for the discussion, consideration of interviews or prospective candidates for employment assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, and resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body for the purpose of discussing pertaining to a council appointee.
That's an informable motion?
Yes, it is.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6:00. We're in closed session. I would ask everyone except the town attorney to please leave the room. In open meeting? Mr. Hubbard?
I move to certify that the town council of the town of Christiansburg, meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, by discussion only public business matters, lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing nine, Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is 6:00. Council will take no action on this matter unless I hear otherwise. Meeting is adjourned.